I am a brother of God. My life is like this. I am a brother of God. I am a brother of God. I am a brother of God. In this matter, we will pray to God. We will pray to God. My prayer is to protect you. Yes, Christ, I will pray for you. Amen.
Amen. Dear God, let us pray. Amen. Amen. Dear God, let us pray. Amen. 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 Dear God, let us pray. 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 Now, I request Brother Marvin Vishat to begin the word ministry. I request Brother Joseph to translate.
Thank you. We continue in Job chapter thirty eight this morning.
I am a brother of God. I am a brother of God. I am a brother of God.
And we look to these first verses as a description of the creation of the earth.
We have seen the creation of the earth. We have seen the creation of the earth.
That's down to verse number seven.
I am a brother of God. 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 I am a brother of God.
And then from verse eight to verse eleven, it's the creation of the sea.
I have seen the creation of the sea.
Regarding the creation of the earth, it is like a large building, a construction site.
We have seen the creation of the earth. We have seen the creation of the earth.
And we read in the verses about the foundations in verse number four.
We have seen the foundation of the earth.
Verse five, we read about the measurements.
We have seen the foundation of the earth.
Verse five also read about the stretching of the lines to mark the foundation.
We have seen the foundation of the earth.
Verse number six, we read about the cornerstone.
We have seen the cornerstone.
The cornerstone is so important because it squares the building.
We have seen the cornerstone.
And this is God's description of the creation of the world.
We have seen the creation of the earth. We have seen the creation of the earth. We have seen the creation of the earth.
And we have noticed already that in this chapter, Job was asked many questions.
We have seen the creation of the earth.
To impress upon Job how limited his own knowledge was.
We have seen the creation of the earth.
There were thirty-five questions in the whole chapter that the Lord asked Job.
We have seen the creation of the earth.
And he asked questions like, where were you, Job, when I led the foundations of the earth?
We have seen the creation of the earth.
And Job, of course, is convinced that he had no part in this work of creation.
We have seen the creation of the earth.
And it's to impress upon Job his own nothingness before an almighty God.
We have seen the creation of the earth.
Verse seven is a wonderful verse. It speaks about the joy of creation.
We have seen the creation of the earth.
The morning stars sang together and the sons of God shouted for joy.
We have seen the creation of the earth.
And we ought, as the Lord's people still, to have a wonderful joy in God's creation.
We have seen the creation of the earth.
When we hear the birds singing and see the beauty of the flowers and the trees.
We have seen the creation of the earth.
When we look into the sky and see the sunrise and the sun setting.
We have seen the sunrise and the sun setting.
When we go out at night and look into the starry heavens.
We have seen the sunrise and the sun setting.
We should know something of the joy of God's creation.
We have seen the creation of the earth.
We think of the beauty of the creation.
We have seen the creation of the earth.
We think of the variety of it.
We have seen the creation of the earth.
Not two flowers that are the same, not two trees that are the same.
We have seen the creation of the earth.
There are beautiful colors and variety and wonder in God's creation.
We have seen the creation of the earth.
And just as it was on this first day of creation, there was great joy.
We have seen the creation of the earth.
We should have joy in our hearts as we appreciate God's creation.
We have seen the creation of the earth.
And our hearts should rise in praise to say, how great thou art.
We have seen the creation of the earth.
Then we have a description of the sea that God created.
We have seen the creation of the sea.
He created the earth and then he created the sea.
We have seen the creation of the sea.
We know that quite a bit of the surface of the earth is covered by sea.
We have seen the creation of the sea.
It's approaching seventy percent of the earth's surface is covered by the ocean.
We have seen the creation of the sea.
And these verses tell us that God has set the boundaries of the sea.
We have seen the creation of the sea.
And he said in verse eleven, hither too shalt thou come, but no further.
We have seen the creation of the sea.
Here shall thy proud waves be stayed.
We have seen the creation of the sea.
And when we think of the wonders of the sea and the purpose of the sea, we marvel at the majesty of God.
We have seen the creation of the sea.
The sea constantly purifies the water system.
We have seen the creation of the sea.
The salt water evaporates in the heat.
We have seen the creation of the sea.
But it leaves the salt behind and the pure water evaporates.
We have seen the creation of the sea.
This rises to form clouds of water.
We have seen the creation of the sea.
The winds blow it in over the land and it falls in showers and rainfall.
We have seen the creation of the sea.
So there's a constant purification of the water for this earth.
We have seen the creation of the sea.
In verse number sixteen, there's a further reference to this sea.
We have seen the creation of the sea.
As thou entered into the springs of the sea.
We have seen the creation of the sea.
And this is something that has been unknown to mankind until recent time.
We have seen the creation of the sea.
And a scientist called Andrew Fisher discovered in two thousand and three the springs in the sea.
We have seen the creation of the sea.
The exploration of the seabed is not very far advanced.
We have seen the creation of the sea.
There's only a relatively small percentage of the surface of the seabed that has been mapped and explored.
We have seen the creation of the sea.
But as they have improved small submarine vehicles, they've been able to explore the sea.
We have seen the creation of the sea.
And in two thousand and three, Andrew Fisher from the university in California, he made a discovery of the sea springs.
We have seen the creation of the sea.
Now, the Bible doesn't need to be authenticated by men.
We have seen the creation of the sea.
But when they make these discoveries, they see that the Bible spoke about it thousands of years before.
We have seen the creation of the sea.
Even in the book of Genesis, chapter seven, during the flood, you read about the fountains of the deep being open.
We have seen the creation of the sea.
And Job is asked, have you known about the springs in the sea?
We have seen the creation of the sea.
But this is something that God has revealed in his word.
We have seen the creation of the sea.
In Psalm one hundred and seven, you read about fishermen who go to sea.
We have seen the creation of the sea.
They go to the sea in ships that do their business in great water.
We have seen the creation of the sea.
And the psalmist said, these see his wonders in the deep.
We have seen the creation of the sea.
The wonderful works of God even in creating the sea.
We have seen the creation of the sea.
And then the scripture goes on to speak about the light and the darkness in verse eighteen and nineteen.
We have seen the creation of the sea.
God created the light at the beginning.
We have seen the creation of the sea.
The first word spoken in creation, let there be light.
We have seen the creation of the sea.
Fall right into the Corinthians, he says, God called the light out of darkness.
We have seen the creation of the sea. We have seen the creation of the sea.
And as Christians, we wonder and thank God for the light of the gospel that came into our hearts.
We have seen the creation of the sea.
Says that God has shined in our hearts to give the light of the knowledge of the glory of God in the face of Jesus Christ.
We have seen the creation of the sea.
So all of these parts of creation are brought to Job's attention.
We have seen the creation of the sea.
The creation of the earth and the sea.
We have seen the creation of the earth.
The creation of the light and the darkness.
We have seen the creation of the sea.
In the next verses, Job's attention is brought to the weather, the elements.
We have seen the creation of the sea.
And again, Job was asked question after question, have you any control of the weather?
We have seen the creation of the sea.
Now let's notice the different elements of the weather that are spoken of.
We have seen the creation of the sea.
Verse number twenty-two, it speaks of the snow.
We have seen the creation of the sea.
Also in verse twenty-two, it speaks of the hail.
We have seen the creation of the sea.
Verse twenty-four, it speaks of the wind.
We have seen the creation of the sea.
Verse twenty-five, the waters and the lightning and the thunder.
We have seen the creation of the sea.
Verse twenty-six, it speaks of the rain.
We have seen the creation of the sea.
Verse twenty-eight, it speaks of the dew.
We have seen the creation of the sea.
Verse twenty-nine, it speaks of the ice and the frost.
We have seen the creation of the sea.
I don't suppose that you know much about the frost in India.
We have seen the creation of the sea.
But if you went far enough north, you would see the snow and the frost.
We have seen the creation of the sea.
But these things are beyond Job's control.
We have seen the creation of the sea.
The Lord is saying, he controls, the Lord controls the weather and all of these things.
We have seen the creation of the sea.
The weather forecaster, he can tell a few days before the direction of the wind.
We have seen the creation of the sea.
They can predict with reasonable accuracy the temperature.
We have seen the creation of the sea.
They can tell when there's a storm coming.
We have seen the creation of the sea.
What they can do, the weather forecaster can do absolutely nothing to affect the weather, to change it.
We have seen the creation of the sea.
These things are under divine control.
We have seen the creation of the sea.
And Job is asked question after question about the weather.
We have seen the creation of the sea.
He again would feel his own inadequacy as he hears the words of almighty God.
We have seen the creation of the sea.
In the next few verses, verse thirty-one to thirty-three, he speaks of the planets in the heavens.
We have seen the creation of the sea.
Could we read please those verses, brother, thirty-one to thirty-three?
We have seen the creation of the sea.
And Job has asked the question about the planets, if he had any control over them.
We have seen the creation of the sea.
Of course, this was completely beyond Job's capability to affect the moon and the stars in the sky.
We have seen the creation of the sea.
In the verses that have just been read, we have some of the planets mentioned by name.
We have seen the creation of the sea.
Ladies and Orion and Mazzorah.
We have seen the creation of the sea.
And also actress with his sons, which is a group of stars together.
We have seen the creation of the sea.
That last group of stars is known locally here as the bear, the bear.
We have seen the creation of the sea.
And that can be, they can be seen, they can be identified in the night sky during the winter.
We have seen the creation of the sea.
Now, this is part of God's creation. Genesis, chapter one, he made the stars also.
We have seen the creation of the sea.
Every one of the millions upon millions of stars, every one is different, it is unique.
We have seen the creation of the sea.
It says that in first Corinthians, chapter fifteen, one star differs from another star in glory.
We have seen the creation of the sea.
They don't all shine with the same brightness.
We have seen the creation of the sea.
They're different, the one from the other.
We have seen the creation of the sea.
And just as the stars are different, every believer is unique and different.
We have seen the creation of the sea.
But the scripture tells us that God knows the number of the stars.
We have seen the creation of the sea.
Men probe into space with their telescopes and try to estimate the number.
We have seen the creation of the sea.
And then they get a stronger telescope and they say, no, there's, the space extends further and there are more galaxies and more stars beyond.
We have seen the creation of the sea.
But in Psalm one hundred and forty-seven, verse four, we read, he tells the number of the star.
We have seen the creation of the sea.
The Lord can do what the scientists could never do, he knows the total number of the star.
We have seen the creation of the sea.
But even more wonderful than that, it says in the same verse, he calls them all by their name.
We have seen the creation of the sea.
We have only a few names mentioned here, but to every star, there is a name.
We have seen the creation of the sea.
So he knows the total number of the star.
We have seen the creation of the sea.
But they are known individually, they are called by their name.
We have seen the creation of the sea.
How wonderful is our God, he is a God of omniscience, he knows all things.
We have seen the creation of the sea.
He knows the total number of believers in India.
We have seen the creation of the sea.
But God does not merely say, there are so many million believers in India.
We have seen the creation of the sea.
He knows them individually, he knows them each one by name.
We have seen the creation of the sea.
Remember the wonderful verse in Isaiah forty-three, I have redeemed thee, I have called thee by thy name.
We have seen the creation of the sea.
The only thought that God knows the total number of believers.
We have seen the creation of the sea.
The Lord knoweth them that are his.
We have seen the creation of the sea.
But more precious still that the Lord knows us individually, one by one, by name.
We have seen the creation of the sea.
My dear Christian friend, this morning, the Lord knows intimately every detail of your life.
We have seen the creation of the sea.
He knows every concern you have, every burden that you carry.
We have seen the creation of the sea.
And not only does he know, but he cares for your situation.
We have seen the creation of the sea.
The apostle Peter wrote, casting all your care upon him, for he careth for you.
We have seen the creation of the sea.
Though the Lord knows the number of the stars and he knows them individually by name.
We have seen the creation of the sea.
I find this a tremendously encouraging thought.
We have seen the creation of the sea.
Isaiah, the prophet of chapter forty, he is told by the Lord to comfort the people of God, comfort my people.
We have seen the creation of the sea.
And one of the means by which Isaiah comforts the people of God is to tell them to look up. And one of the means by which Isaiah comforts the people of God is to tell them to look up.
वारनी देवुन यक्का प्रजल नादरिंचिरानिकी अष्टरम चेस्टुनादंटे पाइक चोडमंतुनाद
He said, lift up your eyes on high and behold, who has created these things.
मारी अक्का कनुलनो आकाशम वाइपु चुची, एवरु वीटिनी सुर्षिंचा रम, मेर चोड़वल्सिंदिगा मारी अष्टर प्रजल कोरकुन्नाद
We are so prone to have our vision fixed on things down here.
भूमि मिदा उन्ना संगतल वाइपे मन दृष्टिकोगा पिट्टीन वारंगा कन्पिस्तुन्नाद
To get occupied with our own difficulties, perhaps our illness, or our problems that come from day to day.
मारी अनुदिनम मनकु वच्चे समस्याल मेदा, परिस्थितिल मेदा मन कनु दृष्टिकोगा उन्नाट्य मन चूस्ताम
The word of God and through the prophet Isaiah, he says, lift up your eyes and behold, who has created these things.
अष्टर प्रवक्त एमंतुनादंटे, मी अक्का कनुलनी कनुलाइत्ती चोडंडे, एवरु चेसरी संगतल नी सुर्षिनी
The God who created the stars is able to control, is able to bless his people from day to day.
नक्षत्राल सुर्षिंचिन वाड़े, तन प्रजल कुरा देविंचे वाड़गा उट्टुनाद
But not only does God, has God created the stars, but he guides the stars in their orbit, the planets.
देवड़ू नक्षत्राल सुर्षिंचन मटके कादु, वाटिवाटिकक्षलो अवि प्रायनिंचे तत्ल चेस्टादि देवड़ू
And we'll read this in Jeremiah chapter thirty-one, please, verse thirty-five, Jeremiah thirty-one, verse thirty-five.
इर्मयाग्राणम पायकुट अज्जायम पायदवच्चिनम मन चलदाम
Please read, dear brother.
पगट्टी वेलुगुकाई सूर्यनी, रात्रि वेलुगुकाई चंद्र नक्षत्रमलो निमिंचुवारुनो, धानी तरंगमलो गोशिंचुनाट्य, समुद्रमलो रेपुवारुन अगु यहोवा, आमाट सलविच्चुचुनादु, साइनिमल कदि पद्यागु यहोवा, अनि आयनिक पेयर
Notice what the scripture says, that God has given the sun for a light by day.
देवड़ू करान्नादु, पगट्टी वेलुगुकाई सूर्यनी
And the moon and the stars for a light by night.
रात्रि वेलुगुकाई चंद्र नक्षत्रमलो निमिंचुवारुनो
But notice the word in the text, it speaks of the ordinances of the moon and the star.
आ इकड़ा मन चूस्तुन्नाम, रात्रि वेलुगुकाई चंद्र नक्षत्रमलो निमिंचुवाडु, अनि मन चूस्तुन्नाद
That is, God has plotted the course for every star.
प्रति नक्षत्रानिक आयना विधिनी निमिंचे वाड़गा उट्टुनाद
They're not just moving at random in a haphazard way in the universe.
आयका नक्षत्राल तामकिस्तमचिन रीतलो प्रायनिंचिरानिकी देवड़ू अप्पुकोडमले
There is an ordinance set by Almighty God.
सर्वशक्तिमंत्रयन देवड़ू वाटिको वक्का कक्षणो, वक्का विधिनी निमिंचाद
So he has created them and he controls them.
देवड़ू वाटिनी सुर्षिंचादु, वाटिनी तन आधिनमलो निम्ची नियंत्रिंचे वाड़गा उट्टुनाद
Let's look at another verse in Jeremiah, chapter thirty-five, chapter thirty-three and verse twenty-five, chapter thirty-three, twenty-five.
इर्मयाग्राणम मुप्पा मुड़वा अज्जायम मुप्पा पायदवाय आयदवच्चिनम
Please read, dear brother.
यहोवा ये माट सलविच्चुचुनादु, पगट्टीनी गुच्चीयो, रात्रिनी गुच्चीयो, नेनी चेसन निबंधन निलकड़गा उन्ना नियडला, भूमि आकाशमल गुरिंचिन विधुलनो, निमिंचुवारुनो नेनु, कानी यडला, अब्राहाम इस्साकु, याकोबल संतानमन एलुटकु, अतनी संतान सम्बंधनी एलिकनु एरपच्चुकुनका, नेनु याकोब संतानपु वाड़गुना, सेवकड़यन दावेदु संतानमन विसर्जिंथुन निश्चयमगान नेनु वार यडला जालीपड़ी, चरलो नुंडी वार निरप्पिंच्यदन
Thank you, thank you. The God is saying, I have appointed the ordinances of heaven and earth.
भूमि भूमि आकाशमल कु देवड़ू विधुल निमिंचाद निमान चूस्ताम
And the next verse says, if he had not, if he had not sent, controlled the ordinances of the heaven and earth, he could cast away his people, Israel.
आयका देवड़ू वाटिकी निविधुलनु निमिंचक पोइन यडला, मारी आयका इसरायल नु आयन विसर्जिंचिन वाड़आउथाद
This verse is actually about the security of God's people.
आयका तन यक्का प्रजल यक्का मारी आर्यग्यम निमित्तम, आर्यग्यम विषम माट्लार्तुन्नाद
God is saying, just as I have an ordinance for the stars and the sun and the moon and the heavens, I have a plan for my people.
नेने लागु आयका चंद्र नक्षत्रमलो कु सूर्यनिकी, आकाशमलो कु विधुल निमिंचानो, नायका प्रजलपट्ला कुरा नेनु का प्रणालिक कलियुनाद निद देवड़ू चप्पुन्नाद
Their course is marked in the heavens and God's people on earth should be under his guidance and control.
लागु वाटिकी कक्षण निमिंचादु, विधुल निमिंचादु, आकाशमलो, तन प्रजलपट्ला कुरा आयना मारी आधिनम आयन नियंत्रण उन्नाट्य मन चूस्तुन्नाद
Now, there's a practical lesson for us here surely, that the Lord has a plan to guide us on our way through life.
मारी जीवम मार्गमलो मन प्रायनिंचे तत्ल सहायम जेसे, वाड़गा देवड़ू वक्का प्रणालिक कलियुन्नाद
Just as he guides the stars and the heavens.
आकाशमलो निन नक्षत्राल लागु आयन नडिपिस्तुनाद
And they don't collide the one with the other, they have their own course marked.
वाटिवाटिकक्षल अवि तिरुताय कानी, वोकुन नकुड़ी दीक्कुने समस्या ले
And we ought to be guided and under God's control in the pathway that we take.
मनमो प्रायनिस्तुन्ना मार्गमलो, देवुन यक्का आधिनमलो उन्नी मन नियंत्रिंसबड़ला
He has set the ordinance for the stars and he has a plan for your life and mine.
नक्षत्राल कु विधुल निमिंचिन देवड़े, निविषमलो नाविषमलो वक्का प्रणालिक कलियुन्नाद
In the little book of Jude, it speaks of wandering stars.
युद्ध पत्रिकलो मारी तिरुगुलाडुचुन्ना नक्षत्राल गुरिंची माट्लार्तुनाद
Now, that term refers to unbelievers, wandering stars.
आयका विश्वासल गुरिंची माट्लार्तु, तिरुगुलाडे नक्षत्राल न चप्पुन्नाद
But still, as believers, we should think of the course that we are taking, that we are not wandering stars.
मनमो देवड़ू निमिंचिन कक्षलो तिरुतु, मनमो कुरा तिरुगुलाडु नक्षत्रमल लागु उन्ना कुर्डनी देवड़ू मन हच्चरिस्तुनाद
God would not have us to be going here and there and wandering and wandering in our witness for the Lord.
Brother, can you repeat?
God has a plan for every Christian and he has a direction for us to follow.
देवड़ू मनली वक्का दिशलो प्रायनिंचिरानिकी देवड़ू मनली नडिपिस्तुन्नाद
We should be under his guidance and control from day to day.
मनमो अनुदिनम आयनी अक्का मारी आधिनमलो उन्नी मनमो, मारी आयन यक्का नडिपिंचिना, नडिपिंपुन बट्टी मन नलवल्सिंदिद
In Psalm one hundred and forty-eight and verse three, you have reference to the stars praising the Lord.
नोटन अल्फाय एर्विदो कितनलो, आयका नक्षत्राल आयनी मारी स्तुतिस्तुनाट्य मन चूस्ताम
Please read the verse, brother, one hundred and forty-eight, verse three.
नोटन अल्फाय एर्विदो कितननाम मोड़वच्चिनम, सूर्य चंद्रलारा आयननु स्तुतिंचुड़ी, कांतिगल नक्षत्रमलारा, मेर अंदरु आयननु स्तुतिंचुड़ी
This verse tells us that the sun and moon and stars can praise the Lord.
यक्का वच्चिनम, सूर्य चंद्रलो, कांतिगल नक्षत्राल आयन स्तुतिंचालनी, मारी कितना काडुकोर्तुन्नाद
And we ask the question, how is that possible? They have no voice to articulate their praise.
अधि लागु साध्यम, वाटिकी स्वरम ले कदा
But we as believers, we have the ability to praise the Lord.
कानी विश्वासल मगम मनकु अलांटी अधि साध्यम
How are we to understand the verse that says that the sun and moon and stars praise him?
इकड़ा सूर्य चंद्रलो, कांतिगल नक्षत्रमलो, अंदरु आयननु स्तुतिंचमनी, मारी कितना काडु चप्पुन्नाद
In a similar passage, you have verse number five, let them praise the name of the Lord, he commanded, and they were created.
आयदवच्चिनमलो मन चूस्ते, यहोवा आग्नि एगा अवि पुट्यनो, अवि यहोवा नाममनु स्तुतिंचुनु गाकान उट्टुनाद
They praise the Lord by just fulfilling the purpose for which God has made them.
देवड़ू एवुदेशम देवाटिन निमिंचादु, अवाटिनी ने रवेच्चुद्वारा, देवनी अवि स्तुतिंचे गले उट्टुनाय
They have no voice to praise the Lord.
वाटिकलांटी स्वरम ले, देवनी स्तुतिंचरानिकी
But they praise the Lord by fulfilling the purpose of their creation.
देवड़ू एवुदेशम देवाटिन सुर्षिंचादु, वाटिनी ने रवेच्चुद्वारा
God is our creator, we noticed in the story of Elihu, he speaks of God as my maker.
एलिहु माट्लार्तु, देवड़े ननु सुर्षिंचादन चप्पुन्नाद
We are called upon to fulfill the purpose for which the Lord has made us.
देवड़ू एवुदेशम देवाटिन चेस्टादु, अवुदेशनी मनमो ने रवेच्चुवल्सिन वारम उट्टुनाद
We have doubly our responsibility to the Lord as our creator and our redeemer.
आयन मन विमोचिकड़गा, मन सुर्षिकर्तगा, मनमो डेरिन वारमय, आयन निमिंचिन बाज्यतनु मन ने रवेच्चुवल्सिन वारम उट्टुनाद
It is interesting to see how that the stars are controlled by the Lord.
मारी देवड़ू लागु आयका नक्षत्राल नियंत्रिस्तुनादु, अधि अष्टर करमन संगतिगा मन चूस्त
We remember that in the book of Joshua, chapter ten, God commanded the sun to stand still.
यहोश्वा ग्राणम पदवज्जायमल मन चूछनाट्य लाइटे, मारी यहोश्वा आयका सूर्यनी ने अपिवेच्चिनाट्य का मन चूस्ताम
And while they were, the battle was going on, an extra day, one more day was added because the sun stood still.
आयका युद्धम जरुगुत उट्टुनगा, इनकोका दिनमो चरित्रकी मारी कलपबड़ीनाट्य का मन चूस्तुन्नाद इंदकंटे सूर्य डागिप्याड़ काबट्टी
And we remember of course that when the Lord Jesus was born, there was the star that guided the shepherds to where he was.
वाइस मैन
The wise man, sorry.
अष्टर प्रभु, अष्टर प्रभु जन्मीचिन अपुडु, आयका नक्षत्रम ज्ञानु लागु नडिपिंचिन दम मन चूस्तुन्नाद
The wise men were guided by the star.
आयका ज्ञानु जा नक्षत्रम चेतन नडिपिंसबड़द
God had planned it and God was able to control the star and direct it as they traveled.
देवड़ू आयका नक्षत्राल नी सुर्षिंची वाटिनी, वाटिनी नियंत्रिस्तुन्ना वाड़गा नडिपिंचे वाड़गा मन चूस्तुन्नाद
In the book of James, there's a wonderful expression that our God is the father of lights.
याकोब पत्रिक अमुक्त अज्जायमलो, आयना मारी देवड़ू आयका वेलुगुन सुर्षिंचे वाड़गा मन चूस्तुन्नाद
Which undoubtedly is a reference to the stars in the heavens.
अधि येमिनी देनी तेले चेस्टुनांटे, आयका नक्षत्राल नी अधि तेले चेस्ट दिगामुन्नाद
Isn't it a wonderful thought that the one who made the stars and controls the stars is our father?
मन तंड्री, तेजोमय डे ना तंड्री, मन निन नक्षत्राल नी सुर्षिंचे वाड़गा, वाटिनी नडिपिंचे वाड़गा मन चूस्तुन्नाद
We have a relationship with him, he is our father.
आयना अलांटी तंड्रतो मनकु सम्बंधम कलियुन्नाद
And if he is a God of such immense power as he is, then can we not trust him day by day for the necessities and blessings of life?
मन जीवित अनुदिन जीवितमलो, मन अवसरतल निमित्तम, आशीर्वादल निमित्तम, आयन वाइपु मन चोड़वल्सिंदिद, आयनी नम्मवल्सिंदिद
May we be like Isaiah encouraged us to look up, lift up your eyes and see who has created these things.
अष्टर चेप्पीन रीतिगा, मारी मी तललु पाइकेत्ती, देवड़ू चेसन सुर्षिनी चोडंडनी, आमाट चेतन मन गुरा प्रोत्साहिंसबड़दाम
If we look into our own hearts, we find disappointment.
मन फ्रुद्याल लग मन चूस्कुंटे, निरुच्छाहम कन्पिस्तदि
If we look out on a troubled world, we could be distressed.
आयका सर्वलोकानी निरुच्छाहमलो उन्ना, समस्यालो उन्ना, सर्वलोकानी मन चूचिन अपुडु, मन निरुच्छा पड़े वरंगम ताम
But if we lift our eyes heavenward and think of the great God of creation, it's for our encouragement.
मनमो तललु पाइकेत्ती, आकाशम वाइपु चुची, आयका गोपा सर्वसुर्षिनी सुर्षिंचिन, सर्वसुर्षिकर्तनु, चुचिन अपुडु, मन केंतो प्रोत्साहम लभिस्तदि
Now we notice the question that's asked here to Job concerning the morning, hast thou commanded the morning since thy days?
योबुनी देवड़ू प्रश्निस्तु, उदयकालपु, उदयकालन गुरिंचीनु आयन प्रश्निस्तुन्नाद
And the question is asked to Job concerning the morning, verse twelve, hast thou commanded the morning since thy days?
पनिंद अवच्चिनम मन चूछनाट्य लाइटे, अरुणोदयम गुरिंची देवड़ू योबुन प्रश्निस्तुन्नाद
This is something that God looks after, he commands the sun to rise in the morning.
उदयकालमना देवड़ू सूर्यडु उदयंचिनाट्य, देवड़ू आग्नपिस्तद
The scripture says in the Gospel of Matthew, chapter five, he causes the sun to rise on the evil and on the good.
देवड़ू मत्तेस्वता आयदवच्चिनमलो, मारी नीतिमंतल मेदनु, मारी चड्डवार मेदनु, देवड़ू तन सूर्यनी उदयंचे तत्ल चेस्टाद निमान चूस्तुन्नाद
The man of the world will say, that's just nature, that's, day follows day and day follows night, the sun arises.
मानवड़ू, लोक सम्बंधमयन मानवड़ू एंटंटन, एमंटनंटे, अधि प्रकृति अलागु जरिस्तदि, उदयकालमना सूर्यडु उदयस्तदु, अनि चेप्पे वाड़गा उट्टुनाद
But our Bible says that God causes the sun to rise.
कानी बाइबल चेप्पे देंटंटे, देवड़े सूर्यडु उदयंचे तत्ल चेस्टाद
So if that's the case as it is, then we should take every day as a gift from God.
मारी अलांटी परिस्थितिलो, मनमो, मारी प्रतिदिनमो देवड़ीचे वरमगा मनमो भाविंसाल
We remember Psalm one hundred and eighteen, this is the day that the Lord has made.
नोटन पज्जिंदो कितनलो मन चूस्ताम, इदिनमो देवड़ी चेसन दिनमनी मन चूस्तुन्नाद
Every time the sun rises, we are gifted another day.
Suru udainchina pratidinamo, devudu managangrahinchina, dinamuga manamo grahinchala.
A day in which we can praise the Lord, a day in which we can serve the Lord as we wait for his coming.
Ayaka, dinamo, praramamalo, devanistutistu, manamo devani ayaka dinamno praramichavadiga, manamo undavalsintunadu.
But Job is asked the question, can you cause the sun to rise? Can you bring a new day? Of course, the answer is no.
Devudu yobun praschnistu, surudu udainchitatlu chegalava, ani praschnistuntunadu, dhani kisamadhana mo, kadu ani chapaachu.
Not one of these questions Job is able to answer.
I praschnalanetiki, yobo, ematramu samadhana michavadiga ledu.
And this speaks about how that God sends the rain in verse twenty-six, he sends the rain on the earth, in the wilderness where no man is.
Irobayara vachinamo, mupayamidavachayam, irobayara vachinamo, janululeni, edari lo, varshamukuripinchutakuno, ani manu chustam.
Verse twenty-seven says to satisfy the desolate and waste ground, to cause the bud of the tender herb to spring forth.
Paada inayedari ni trupthiparsutakuno, leeta gaddi malipinchutakuno.
Now, let's think of this for a moment.
Imitinivisham kojimala chenchadu.
This is a desert place where no man ever comes.
Yavuru leni, janululeni, ayaka nermaanushyamayana, edari ani manu chustamo.
This verse tells us that God sends the rain to fall in that place.
Devudu, kire vachinavijabstundante, alanti pradeshamlo, devudu varshamkuripinchavadigamntunadu.
The purpose is that a herb will grow in that location, it'll grow and it'll bud and it'll bring forth, it'll blossom.
Akada, dhani akudesham intantate, leeta gaddi malustadi, ani manam akada manu chustuntunadu.
Now, the question is, why? Why does the Lord do such a thing?
Devudu alanti vishal, enduku chastunadu, ani adi praschnamaanuku assai.
Nobody will ever see it?
Yavuru dhani chusinavadigalero?
Nobody will ever benefit from it?
Ah, yavuru dhani, mari gamanichi, chusavadigalero?
What's the purpose that God would send rain to make a plant grow in the wilderness where no one will ever come?
Ayedari lo, devudu varshamkuripinchia, akada leeta gaddi malipetatu chastunadu, endukani?
Ah, but we remember what our Bible says.
Bible cheppe, maatanam, manu sakshaknapkamcheskunam.
All things are created by him and for him.
Devuduchesina pratidi, ayana korake, annatiga, ayana chetha chevadinda, ayana korake chevadinda, ani manu chustam.
There may be no man to see it, but God has pleasure in every part of his creation.
Manavudu chunaleka pochikaani, mari devudu, tanasantosham nimittamo, ayana chesavadigamntunadu.
All things created by him and for him.
Ani sangatlu, ayana dwarane chevadne, ayana korake chevadintunai.
When we move into verse thirty-nine, it begins a new section that deals with the element creation.
Mupaytamidavachinamunichimana chusinatlate, akada, vakajentugulugunichimartladuntunadu.
There are five birds mentioned and five animals in this section that goes right down to the end of chapter thirty-nine.
Yaka mupaytamidhi, mupayamidavachayam, mupaytamidavachinamunichim, mupaytamidavachayam akari vachinamvaraku, aidu jentulu, aidu pakshalugunichimartladuntunadu.
Our time will only allow us to look at these, glance at them, but the first animal that's mentioned is a lion in verse number thirty-nine.
Ani chudaniki, manuka, samemleka pochikaani, motamalthe, jentu, akara sima, manu manu chustuntunadu.
And we are told, again, it's a question to Job, will you be able to hunt the prey for the lion?
Nu sima pillalanimittamo, vetadi, vaatia akale tiristavaa, ani praschnistunadu.
Think of that question and Job would know immediately, there's nothing that he could do to provide a prey or food for the lion.
Mari, yobo, vaativetadi, ayoka sima pillalaki, vaatia akalni tichavadiga, unnatiga manaku kanpinchadu.
In the Old Testament, in the Psalms, in Psalm one hundred and four, verse twenty-one.
Nota nalgaavakirtanalo, irobayakutavachinam manu chusinatlate.
We read about the young lions, they roar after their prey and they seek their food from God.
Nota nalgaavakirtanalo, irobayakutavachinamo, sima pillalu vetakoraku gajinchunabi, tamahaharamunu devani chethilo, undi tisukona jutuchunabi.
That is, it is the Lord who provides even the food for the animals, the food for the lion.
Devude, asima pillalaki, jentulaki, aharamichavadigamntunadu.
And it says in this verse that the young lions, they seek their food not from their parent lions, but from God.
Ayoka sima pillalu, tamat, talidandulugunichidegganuchikadigani, devunichayaharamunu pondevagamntunai.
Again, it's a question that Job could not answer.
Ayaka praschnaki, yobu, yobu deggara samadhana ledu.
Question after question after question convinced Job at how frail and limited he was in comparison to God.
Devunitho pochichustae, praschnamembadi praschna, devu radhinaappudu, ayaka yobu deggara samadhana ledu, asalu atarintaa paramitudo, adi spastanga arthamavatunadu.
Speaks of the young lion and its appetite in verse number thirty-nine.
Mupaytamidavachinamlo, mupayamidavachayam, mupaytamidavachinamlo, vaatiyaka akali, manam chustam akara.
Who says to it that the young lion is fed?
Brother?
Who is responsible for the young lion being fed?
Ayaka, sima pillaki, akale tirchana bajata, yavuridi?
Well, the Lord is saying to Job, I am able to look after that, the young lion is fed.
Ah, devudu yobuku, ayaka praschnaki, devudu samadhana mistu, neene vaatini pochistanantunadu.
Then, in verse forty-one, the last verse of the chapter, it speaks of the first of the birds, the raven.
Nalbayavatavachinamlo, motamaltega, vakpakshigunichiddevu martladuntunadu.
Who provides for the raven his food when the young ones cry unto God?
Kakipillalu devaniki marapetinappudu, kakiki aharam sidhaparsuvadavadu.
Now, the Lord Jesus, when he was here on earth, he referred to the raven, he spoke about the raven.
Ayaka, yesu prabhu buhomidavunappudu, kaakini gunichimartladinavadigamntunadu.
Let's read the verse, please, in Luke, chapter twelve and verse twenty-four.
Lukasvathapanendavachayam, miravanalga vachinam manu chustam.
Please read, brother.
Kakula sangati vichariinchichududi, abi vittabu, koyavu, vaatikgariseledu, kotuledu, ayannanu devudvaatini pochinchachunadu, mir pakshalakante, entosrestalu.
You've seen this verse, the words of the Lord Jesus, consider the raven.
Ah, yesu prabhu chepina maatul gamaninchandi, kakula sangati vichariinchichududi.
The Lord is saying, there are lessons that we can learn by considering the raven.
I kakula sangati vichariinchudwaara, manaku kani pataalan nechkochani, yesu prabhu chiptunadu.
They don't do any work, they don't sow a raven.
Abi vittabu, koyavu, elanti pani chayavu.
They don't have any property, they don't have any storehouses or barns.
Vaatikgariseledu, kotuledu.
But God feeds them.
Kani devude vaatini pochistadu.
Now, he says after that, how much more are you better than the fowl?
Mir pakshalakante, entosrestalu, ani chaptunadu.
Ah, the Lord is saying, if he is able to feed the ravens, then he is able to look after you.
Ah, devu, yesu prabhu antunadu, kakulini pochinchina, devu ninukuda pochinchagala.
And this is the question asked to Job, who provides for the raven his food?
Ah, devudu yobun praschnistu, kakulini pochinchinavadavadu.
And again, as with the lion, the young ones are spoken of in the verse. The young ones are spoken of in verse forty-one.
Ah, nalabayavatavachinamlo, kakipillalugunichimartladuntunadu.
It says they cry unto God.
Ah, kakipillalu devaniki marapertayantunadu.
They wander for lack of food.
Chindilaka thiruguladavegavatunai.
So, that's the questions that are asked to Job regarding the first of the animals, the lion, God provides for the lion.
Ah, jentuguluguvisham matladu, motamaltega, simangugunichimartladu, vaatinipochinchavadu, vaatika aharamichavadu, devudani chaptuntunadu.
And concerning the raven, God provides for the raven.
Kakulugunichimartladu, vaatikkuda, devude, mari aharamichavadani chaptuntunadu.
So, there is much in this chapter, number thirty-eight, to encourage us as the people of God.
Yaka, manamu devani prajalamuga, manali prochahistu, yaka mupayamidavachayam, maatalu, manakchaptuntunadu.
This is the Lord speaking directly to Job.
Devudu neruga, yobuto martladuntunavadiga kanpishtunadu.
You've read, we read about how that the Job's friends, they spoke, they had plenty to say.
Manamo, yobusnehitulu, elagumaatladaro, manamu truskuntavachamo.
Then Eliphas, he went on for six chapters, he had a lot to say.
Eliphas, aaravachayalu, matladadu.
Job himself had much to say in this book.
Yaka, grandamlo, yobu kuda aneka maatalu martladadu.
But now, in chapter thirty-eight, the Lord speaks directly to Job.
Mupayamidavachayamlo, devudu neruga, yobuto martladuntunadu.
May we hear his voice through these words and may they be this day an encouragement for us.
Yaka, maatalu, manamo vininavarmai, manaka prochaham nimittamo, vaatini manamo shvekarisda.
There are some great construction projects going on in the world today.
Gopanirmanamo, lokamalo zariguthaantunadu.
But this is the greatest construction program there has ever been when God created the earth.
Devudu buhomisushtrinchinappudu, ani nirmanalakantimichina nirmanamuga, manam dani chustam.
There's much to encourage us as we think of the sea and God's control of the sea.
Devudu, ayoka samudraani sushtrinchivatini elaguneentristunadu, manam chustae, aymanikantho prochakaranagamta.
When we think of what it says in verse twelve, or sorry, verse number sixteen, about the springs in the sea.
Padharavachinamlo, samudramlo, ni votalu chustam.
All part of the wonders of God's creation.
Devunisushtrileonim, adbutalu, ikada manam chustam.
He made the light in the darkness in verse number nineteen.
Pandamidavachinamlo, devudu, chikati veligunusushtrinchinavadiga, manakantistadu.
How thankful we ought to be today for the light of the gospel that has entered our hearts and lives.
Manajevitalalo, ayaka suvarthapu veligu prakashinchina waramuga, manamo untnamaleeda.
There are many around us still in the darkness of sin, indeed the Savior.
Mari, ayaka papumayaka andakaramalo nimshistana, aneka mandu antunadu.
But the scripture says that God has brought us out of darkness into his marvelous light.
Asharekaramayana, veligulani kii, chikatlonani, manupilchina, devudani, manu chustam.
Then the weather that is mentioned here is under God's control.
Ikada, vatavaranamo, devunyoka, niantranalavunadu.
And it shows us the awesome power of God, he's able to control all of these aspects of the weather in every part of the world.
Prapanchimlo, vatavaranam mottani, devudu, tanadinamolunchkoni, neentristuntunadu.
And then God's, his making of the stars, the creation of the stars, which is in verse, chapter nine, all of these things are mentioned, and God created them, chapter nine.
Devudu, mari, elagunakshatraalni samastani sushtrinchado, manam chustamo.
But in this passage, God controls the planets that he has made.
Devudu vaatinisushtrinchivatini elaguanineentristadu, man spastanga kanpishtuntunadu.
And our Father is the Father of nights, he is intimately related to every believer.
Ah, tejo maydayana, mari, devudu, manaku, entagano, sanihitan ga, sambandhamkaligun, tanabiddala to, biswasaasulato, sanitha sambandhamkaligunavadiga, kanpishtuntunadu.
He's able to provide for the lion and for the raven.
Ayaka, sima pillalaki, kakipillalaki, ayana aharamichipochinchavadigamntunadu.
And he's able to meet every need of his people.
Tanaprjalyoka, pratyaavasratano tirchavadiga antunadu.
I think the time for this session is at an end and thank you for your translation, brother. Thank you for listening, dear friend.
Thank you for the wonderful speech, brother. Thank you very much.
Thank you, brother Marin, for the work. You have spoken about technology, brother, so many astrology signs we have heard this morning. Thank you and thank you, brother, for the wonderful translation also. And can I request, brother Janardhan Rao Paluri to pray and close this session? Brother Janardhan Rao? Okay. Yeah.
Ah, yes, brother. Kupakarikaramgutandi, prema thori pellizewa, ninnan edu repekaregunturama, paralakutandi, imadhyana samemundo, marukumaru, meyokabangar paadundo, uchudu, merekubudaychesunna, vidhananibati, mikveladu, velathutumtandi, garchpene, nerudidinala, tadi, meyoka, pershudha, athmadwar, merinadipinchini, sabalunubati, mikveladu, velathutumtandi, indukaitandi, naina, khanika sangamu, tadi, naina, entoscremalu, tisukuni, idhotandi, idhersavu, tadi, pilupinchii, idhotandi, varidwar, tadi, ennno, satyalu, tadi, naina, sangamu, idhotandi, venno, andalukuda, tadi, naina, nechku, mere sahayamchesin, vidhananibati, mikveladu, velathutumtandi, meyoka, athmadwar, ye sabalunu, mere nadipinchuguni, untunadu, sotumtanda, indilo, mere mahima, pundi, untunadu, mikveladu, velathutumtandi, marukumar, tadi, naina, inkano, imadhyana, samemu, taravata, tadi, undavaya, session, kuda, tadi, naina, idhot, meyachadu, apigundu, tadi, naina, yiruru, savu, tadi, mere intavarku, asaridinchii, varidvara, idhotandi, naina, meyoka, pershudha, athmadwar, nadu, dala, daichesin, tadi, naina, alagina, tadi, undavaya, session, kuda, tadi, mere, undi, idhotandi, meyoka, namunu, mere mahima, tetchukuma, nivadukundu, nam, marukumar, tadi, idhotandi, vaakimachapu, vay, sahodanu, idhotandi, vaak, vaakani, tadi, naina, idhotandi, idhotandi, naina, translation, chese, sahodanu, kuda, tadi, mere, mutti, asaridinchii, varu, kuda, ento, chakkaga, tadi, translation, chedu, tadi, mere, sahayamchesun, tadi, sotumtanda, idhotamundi, tadi, English, art, kano, kuda, idhotandi, Telugu, tadi, vini, idhotandi, naina, vaat, bhavalu, dransukundu, mere, sahayamchesun, tadi, mikai, isani, sangha, pedal, gandharik, tadi, naina, idhotandi, mey, varu, mey, meyoka, ninna, asarvaru, kumarin, chuma, nivadukundu, nam, naina, marukumar, tadi, sabalunu, mere intavarku, jaypradanga, nadipinchuguni, untunadu, sahodanu, asaridinchii, idhotandi, yogirundam, tadi, ennno, satyalu, idhotandi, naina, nakshatraalugunichitadi, magu, telenu, vishal, ennno, vishal, mere, andara, neepichundu, tadi, mikveladu, velathutumtandi, idhotandi, naina, marukumaru, raboye, sabalunu, meyachadu, apigundu, tadi, tana, prarthana, mere vinin, tadi, angikarindu, tadi, prarthana, maapram, madhyata, ina, yesu krishna, ati, pershudha, namnadi, vadukundu, nam, pram, tadi, amen.
Ah, thank you, brother, for praying.
Okay, thank you, brother. Thank you so much, brother.
And, e, thadu, e, pooda, udayakalavsheshna, e, poyinde, manamo, ah, rendu, parayilu, koo, brother, joshu, rendu, naruk, badkunavu, ilo, no?
Ah, rendu, naray, rendu, naray, two forty-five ki message.
Ah. Rendu, naruk, thiri, manu, kalskunam, ah, ondanal, prabhu, na, ondan, kona, naravu, thank you.